Oh my gosh, say no more. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors' August monthly meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask you all to rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands on this concrete ground.
And before we begin, I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session to discuss personnel on July 9th, July 10th, and July 23rd. And on that note, I also want to welcome our new township manager, who is with us tonight for our first monthly meeting, Mr. Bobby Kegel. So I hope you would all say hello to Bobby after the meeting and welcome, welcome him here. We're excited to have him. All right, with that, I will move on to the minutes of the July 8th board meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
A second.
Is there any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Go ahead and call the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. And the August 5th special meeting and workshop meeting.
I move to approve the August 5th special workshop meeting and special meeting minutes.
Any questions or comments?
Well, second it.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving along to our reports, we'll start with our police chief, Chief Alexander.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of July 2024, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,112 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 94 traffic citations. They investigated 36 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 27 individuals. Additionally, for the month of July, the department members conducted two motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in 891 commercial motor vehicles being weighed, 10 of which were found to be overweight. During the details, the officers performed 18 inspections, requiring seven vehicles and three drivers to be placed out of service. During the details, the officers were assisted by members of the Nether Providence Police Department, the West Goshen Township Police Department, the Coatsville City Police Department, the Westchester Borough Police Department, and the Upper Chichester Township Police Department. A year to date, the officers have documented 7,334 calls in our call reporting system. They've arrested 125 individuals. They've issued 697 traffic citations, 331 warnings. They've investigated 214 motor vehicle crashes, and they have put 5,418 trucks over our scales. And I believe for the month, there were no Narcan administrations.
Great, thank you, Chief. Treasurers' report?
Good evening. Through the month of July, in our general fund, we've collected just under 63% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under 65% of our budgeted expenditure.
Thank you. Public Works.
All right, let's see if I do this right. Uh, daily average flow to Downingtown Treatment Plant was just shy of 1.3 million gallons per day. There were no new connections to Dara or Eagleview. Township received 2.88 inches of rain. Normal is 4.7 inches. We've received 25.32 inches of rain since January, which is 1.88 less inches than the normal rain total of 27.2. There were 206 PA1 calls for July, and the sewer department performed various preventative maintenance tasks. Pine Creek Overlook and Sierra Drive pump stations are operating normally. We did have generator usage at both Pine Creek and Overlook for, due to the storms. Structural repairs to the Eagleview wastewater treatment plan are 98% complete. We have a second, third-party inspection taking place here shortly. Once completed, sandblasting and tank coating will begin. We did receive a change order request to expand the scope of sandblasting and tank coating to include all piping mechanisms, boxes, and troughs within the walls of the tank. We're working through that. Milling and paving were completed for the Beach and Maple Street project, and we'll be monitoring the stormwater in that area moving forward. We also received a quote to address the ship-road trunk sewer pipe, which crosses Route 100 and requires repair. We're working through that quote and working with Gannett Fleming to make sure that we have all the right pieces in place to execute that. Our staff televised just shy of 5,000 feet of sanitary sewer main and 400, just shy of 450 feet of storm pipe in July. The paving program for 2024 has been completed. Cabo Scale, Kimberly, Travis, Tessia, and Whitford Hills were paved as part of that program. The resurfacing program for 2024 is nearly complete, including Woodland, Calvary, Steeplewood, Harshaw, Silver Fox, and Valley View. And various road maintenance projects were completed. We installed new stop signs on Timber Springs and at the intersection of Dalen Forge and Shellmire. Catch Basin and other repairs were made, and various other maintenance projects were completed. And we all know that there were significant storms which impacted us on July 16th and 17th. Public Works Department, I think, did an outstanding job of preparing for and responding to the damage, including deploying generators for traffic lights, closing roads, and clearing trees and debris as quickly as possible. And I know, while we're specifically speaking about Public Works, but everybody within the township did an incredible job of responding to that. The Police Department, the Fire Department, the ambulance, just everybody involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. The Fire Marshal?
Yes, for the month of July, the department issued 107 permits for construction. A total of 129 inspections were conducted, 16 fire inspections were completed, 46 use and occupancy certificates were issued, and Fire Marshal responded to 26 incidents and one burning complaint for month.
Thank you. Limeville Fire Company?
Yes, for July, the Limeville Fire Company responded to 86 incidents. Breakdown by municipality is Euclid 51, Upper Euclid 10, West Pike and 4, and 21 and other townships. So far this year, we're at 429.
Thank you. And Euclid Ambulance?
For the month of July, we responded to 131 calls in Euclid, 441 for that month. In total, we're at 3,040 calls.
Great, thank you. Are there any board questions or comments regarding the reports?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports as presented.
A second.
Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. All right, moving along to our business agenda for this evening. First up, we have a presentation by the Downingtown Library.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Smith. I'm the new itch director of the Downingtown Library. I started in February, and six months is actually today. So I'm getting used to being there and getting a better sense of what we do, how we operate, and how we serve the community, including yours. So I want to make sure that everybody has a library card. Yes, if you don't, lots of free services to go with them. So we have lots of library card holders. We added 197 people last month. We have about 11,500 library card holders in the county. This sheet here is our general statistics for last year. We are on track to have a similar number of customer visits and circulation for 2024. We are very busy every day, all day. We have lots of people coming in. We offer many, many programs, and most of them are booked full. We have a fairly small program room. So we typically are fully booked, people on a waitlist if we have one available. And you can also get a brief financial overview at the bottom of this sheet. Now, we are kind of at the turning point in our sort of publicity and calendar. So we're going from summer reading, which ended on Saturday, into our fall. So at the end of the month, we'll have a new best fact sheet that covers May through August. But this gives you a little bit of an idea of the usage by locations. You can see in the spring, Euclid had 3,503 checkouts. As of last week, that number for the year was up to 9,571. So the people of Euclid are using the library frequently and enjoying the materials that we have there. And our program attendance in this winter-spring for children was over 2,000. I can tell you that just in the month of July, that category had 1,200. So our May-through-August statistics there will be really strong as well. We have a great summer reading program, and hundreds and hundreds of children enrolled and participated. They went through the solar system, reading, and redeemed various prizes along the way. So that was a lot of fun. We also had a great Harry Potter birthday celebration, naturally, on July 31st, if you're a Harry Potter fan. We had 301 people attend that event. And it wasn't just kids. I was the sorting hat. I had people ages 3 to 83 get sorted by the sorting hat. So it was really fun. And then this is our sort of spring program overview. We are finalizing what we'll have available for fall. But you can get a good sense. We have young children's programming throughout the week. Those are incredibly popular. We, in the fall, will also have drop-in storytimes happening regularly, which has been really nice for everybody who can't get a spot in our very quickly booking up children's programs. The drop-ins are open to everyone, so they still get some storytime. Along with our knitting and crochet groups, we also have a very dedicated gentle-chair yoga group that meets regularly. And our adult programs, the Board Game Night and Film Forum groups are so passionate and so dedicated that they talked us into doing twice a month for both of those activities rather than just once. Now, we received Euclid support for 2024 in June. Thank you. We really appreciate your support, and we offer these services to the community, and we're really happy to see the community using them. Speaking of special events that might happen, when those storms passed through on July 17th and 18th, we had over 500 people in the library each of those days, many of whom did not have power. So we had Wi-Fi. So when I came in, every flat surface had a laptop on it. Didn't matter if it was a table. If it was flat, it had a laptop on it. We had running water bathrooms. We had air conditioning, because the next couple of days, it was very hot. So we had a lot of people relying on the library to work remotely, just kind of be comfortable, get water out of the drinking fountain. So we're there for those kind of things as well. Looking ahead, we are so in demand, so busy, that we are looking at an expansion project within the next five years. So as you are thinking about budgeting going forward, think about the library. We're just bursting at the seams, which is a wonderful problem to have. But if we had more space, we would be able to offer particularly more space in programs, more spots for young children to join story-taught time, and more spots for more adults to do some gentle-chair yoga. So we'd really like to be able to expand opportunities for some of those programs. What we can also do with slight increases to funding includes bringing in more expensive program guests. So for example, we had two programs in July from the Marshall Steam Museum on STEM, science, technology, and engineering. They're particularly interested in trains. Those were fantastic programs, but they are more expensive to book, and many of our STEM presenters are, because they're going to be bringing materials. The kids might do experiments, activities, and they may, they often come with particular expertise, so their time might be valuable as well. So we love bringing those programs in, but they tend to be a little more expensive. And the other place we're putting any additional budget is toward extra desk staff. We check out 200,000 items a year, plus all of the other questions and concerns and help with computers. We help people print all the time and all kinds of other computer-type questions. So our desk staff work very hard. I spend an hour with anything a desk staff person, because sometimes they just need an extra pair of hands. So that is what we do with any additional funding that our municipalities are able to provide. Do you have any questions about the library?
He looks thoughtful.
And just, well, I'm just curious if we have a specific amount that you're asking, because I think you gave us a specific amount last year, and that just helps us for budgeting purposes.
For 24, you provided 15,000, which is approximately $3 per person for the 25% allotment that Downingtown has for Euclid Township. Now, we're looking at the next year's funding formula, and they may be shifting some of that township assignment around. So if our proportion of the township changes significantly, then we would hope that the funding would adjust to match so that where it's going now comes over to us, since we will be assigned to a much larger proportion of your residents. But the $3 per person rate is what I would call sustaining support, so that kind of allows us to do what we're doing now. But we're growing. The township is growing. Our surrounding municipalities are growing. So increases in funding, even if it's like a 10% increase, helps us start to meet some of that growing demand and need so that we can continue to make sure we have enough people available to check out as much stuff as people want and maintain our collection and make sure that we have plenty of copies of everything that's new and exciting, and also things that are cozy and familiar, all of those children's books that people love and, you know, that, that get what we say loved to death on a regular basis and need to be continually revised. So we have both the freshest stuff and the most comforting stuff in the library. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our Heart of Euclid Nature Learning Trail update. I think Ms. Toni Gorkin is going to be heading that up. And she's brought show and tell. Sure. Can you stand, sorry, can you just stand in the microphone so that anyone who's listening online can hear? You can turn it around if you need to or hold it. Yep, yep, thank you.
All right. What I want to address is the Heart of Euclid Nature Learning Trail. So the type of support required, really, how long do you need to expand the industry? This object uses the natural facilities of the park, the ponds, the plants, the insects, the prospines, and all of it to formulate this learning trail and to competitively use to communicate nature education to public. The trail is not sort of available. It starts at the kiosk. There are 15 stations. And you can start there or get any of the stations. Most of them are marked by sheets attractive on the bird. I'm sorry, I'm not standing in front of them. Anyway, these were donated to us by Longwood Gardens. They came from the critter tree, if any of you were there last winter. When they were done with them, they gave them to us, and we've used them to mark the various stations. Most of them have a marker of this spot. All of the stations QR code. This QR code is, if you use your smart device, your phone, you can open up a chapter. There is a manual with chapters for each of the stations. And at each station, the QR code will take you to that chapter, and you can read about the various natural things, the trees, the flowers, the garden, the insects, all of those things that are along the learning trail. The purpose of the learning trail is for everyone, but it's specifically aimed at families with children who might want to use the park to walk around, do some education with their kids. And we have, so we have, in addition to all of these materials, we have a back that the family can borrow, that has a note the full handbook in it, some guiding materials explaining about the butterflies and the various wildlife and plants in the park, and some small child-type, there's some child measuring devices, magnifying glasses, and so on. So the family, the family, they would like to can borrow this and walk the trail with it and return it at the end. The question, the links are to the whole, there are links to the whole handbook and to the whole map, available along the kiosk, and you can use your phone to get started and launch those. I particularly want to thank you, thank the Heart of Euclid volunteers who have helped make this possible, especially Kathy Tracy, Jim Orley, and Julia, who has been very instrumental in creating the code for these, for these QR codes. So I have on the white to set Julia. Two years, two years ago, my duties to the key volunteers, Heart of Euclid team, and they became members of the Red Handover Day. This leap in technology. So just a little background on the Harding Front Project. It's in its fifth year. It came out of my training as a PA Master Naturalist, and the goals are to, to introduce more biodiversity to our, to provide examples for the public to get educated on sustainable kinds of planting, not a plant of pollinator garden, wetland, or a right. And in general, to support sustainability in the township. So I'd like to thank everybody. I'd like to welcome them to take a walk through the park, stop at one station, follow them all, use the QR codes, and enjoy the
Thank you.
Be remiss if I didn't get a photo, because that's like my job.
Come in there, maybe. Oh, you got it. And while they're doing that, I'll just reiterate my thanks to the Heart of Euclid volunteers, as well as our Historical Commission, who together recently hosted a countywide stop at our township grounds to look at some of the historical and natural elements. I had a little time on that day to stop by in between other commitments that I had, and I was pleasantly surprised to not be able to find a parking spot. It was so crowded. And we had so many volunteers and community members that manned different stations to talk about different elements of our building, of the grounds, of the work that the Heart of Euclid team has done. And it was just, it was great. It was such a diverse and interesting mix of people, and it was great to catch up with people and talk to everyone and just kind of celebrate the work that's been done here over the last couple of years. I'm sure the staff will agree with me that over the last few years, every time I'm here during the day, there's more and more people just kind of walking around and enjoying the grounds and having a picnic lunch or looking in the pond or, you know, doing whatever. So I'm really glad to see that the public space that we've been kind of reinvesting in here is, is being used, and it's being used happily by our families and our community members. Thank you, Toni, and all of our volunteers. Anything else? All right, moving along to number three, Euclid ambulance request for funding.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna turn this this way. So I can see the screen, see you all, and we've been to a lot of townships, and it's always nice to see them public, because this is information we like to share with them as well. And if there are any questions from you all, of course, we'll take them, and we'd love to hear from the public as well. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to have some time on your schedule. I don't have the clicker, so just, okay, you can stop there. So this is our mission and vision. It really hasn't changed. We are primarily 911 emergency medical response organization. We do have a training institute and some other programs that we'll talk about in a little bit. But I wanted to just share a couple of photos. On the left, you'll see some members of our youth group. That, I think, was at Exton Community Day. They do an awful lot for our organization, and in fact, the picture in the middle is of them teaching other people CPR. On the right is a picture of some of the inside of the ambulance, and on the bottom is some of our crew who were recognized by, was in paoli during EMS week. So we actually are more than 911. We do have, as I said before, our 911 service, so very active units and standby services for events. We're also a training institute, where we provide certification opportunities for medical professionals, organizations like childcare centers, and we also offer free community hands-only CPR, basic first aid, thanks to a grant from the West Company. Through our training institute, we're also working on workforce development with a grant from the Just America Foundation to help educate new people who want to be EMTs with scholarships. And the grant was renewed, and this year we'll be able to provide some of our own staff some scholarships to advance from EMT to an A EMT, an advanced EMT, and even help offset the costs of paramedic schools for anyone providers are interested in that. And then I mentioned our youth before. We have a very active youth organization. We are, we lost 20. We're through graduation, and we are picking up at least another 23, and we still have a waiting list of another 20. So we have a total of 40 kids, 40-ish kids, which is about all we can really handle with the mentors that we have, the space that we have, and the time that, the time that our, our staff has. It is probably the largest EMS youth group in our general region. They help us with, not only do they learn themselves, they also become aides on our trucks. Some of them have become EMTs through a scholarship program. They do all of our work, all of the work at the community events. So we have what we used to call the Teddy Bear Hospital. We don't have teddy bears anymore. But so they do a whole layout of teaching people how to do hands-only CPR, stop the bleed, how to get rid of old medications, and a whole host of other things. Thank you. So I'm gonna ask Kami to talk about our latest program, Mobile Integrated Healthcare.
So as Kathy said, we are 911, but we are the first in Chester County to start a new emerging trend, which is called mobile integrated health, which is non-emergent 911 care for our community. So what that looks like is we'll have specially trained paramedics called mobile integrated healthcare technicians who have a different set of protocols and practices where we can actually treat the patients at home versus being transferred 911 to the local hospital. So imagine yourself post-discharge from the hospital. Most of us don't listen to the post-discharge instructions, right? They get thrown somewhere. We just want to get snuggly in our bed. And the mobile, you call 911 24 hours later, because that usually happens within the 72-hour period. And now the crew gets there. They say, this is a mobile integrated health patient. This is not a 911, and that paramedic can actually treat you and take care of you at home, link you to services, call your doctor, maybe pick up a prescription or get the prescription to you, teach you about your medical maybe pick up a prescription or get the prescription to you, teach you about your medications, do medication recs, do a home analysis. So there's many, many different ways this program can help our community keep people at home with the care they need. The big part of this is connecting you to programs in our community that are already there that a lot of people don't know about or are afraid to use or don't want to use. So we are using programs that are already well established. We've been able to get a contract with the Department of Aging to see their patients in our community. Homelessness is on the rise in our community and our area, especially in our seniors. So working with them to find social services and support that they need. And also the big part about this is that it frees our 911 crews for the calls they really need to be on. Because nationally, about 75 to 80% of 911 calls are not 911. This is a big part of our mental health. So we've seen a huge spike in mental health calls over the last four years, especially after COVID. And to about 13% of our call volume is mental health. And to be able to pair those patients, keep that at home, pair them with a new Chester County Mobile Mental Health Program and teach them about their medications so that it can sustain that care and support the family members who take care of them. So it's a little bit about it. This is 100% grant funded. So as we're asking for money, we're like, great, start a new service that costs money. We were able to scare about half a million dollars in ARPA funding. And with an additional 120 from Senator Fetterman for equipment. And we've been able to secure contracts to show sustainability over the next three years as we grow. So thank you very much.
Should get the class off with the grounds when we get to the money part. And I probably should have introduced us. I'm Kathy Buzan, I'm the executive director at Euclid ambulance corps. And this is Tammy Whitman, who is our chief of operations and also currently our director of mobile integrated healthcare. And three or four more hats, but they don't have titles. So in Euclid Township, can you? Yeah, thank you. So our, the population of our service area, this was actually 2022 data. At the time I put this together, I couldn't, like the 23 data wasn't out. Our population in our total service area, 75,200-ish. And Euclid makes up about 25 and a half percent of that. Our 2023 call volume was 5,062. And Euclid accounts for 31% of that. I should point out, I think Tammy mentioned what the year-to-date total call volume was. We are on track this year to do about 5,500 calls. And in fact, there was one day about a week and a half ago where our crews did 31 calls in 24 hours. So over the last seven years, this is, all the townships that we cover, all are part of. And in Euclid Township, the, is the top contributions, because it's covered, I think. Yes, top is contributions, 34.9% total, our average over seven years with an average call volume of 32.1%. So that's just some statistics about Euclid. This is how this shapes up in townships, the rest of the townships that we serve. Call volume contributions. And keep in mind, we use call volume because that's something that people are familiar with. But there are a lot of other factors that go into how we serve a community. For example, some of the smaller areas that we have, there's a part of the turnpike that runs through them. So it's not really about, you know, how many, how many people live there, but the calls that are actually attributed to that township. And we also have to pay for the state of readiness. So our crews are ready 24/7, 365. So the problems that we're facing, these are not new. We've had, we've talked, we've been talking about this for a while. We've had stagnant revenues for a very long time. Primarily it's Medicare. So I'll just give you an example, for an advanced life support call, we might bill, let's say $2,800. And we will get $400 and change for Medicare. That is the fixed rate and we are not allowed to balance bill the patient. Occasionally we can if they have supplemental insurance, but if all I have is Medicare, that's it. So literally every call we go on, we lose money. Even private insurance companies, it is taking three, four and five times to have them reprocess the invoice till they actually finally pay what they were going to pay to begin with. So all of that takes time and it's a cash flow issue. We are still facing skyrocketing costs. We'll talk in a little bit about capital, but I'll give you an example. We just purchased an ambulance completely empty. So it was just the chassis and the box totally empty, was $307,000. And they're telling us that in about a year, a year and a half, that same ambulance is going to be about a half a million. And that doesn't include the stretcher, the power load, the monitor, the Lucas device, the stair chair and all the ALS bag and the BLS bag and all that other stuff that you saw there. What's, so the first two aren't necessarily new. But what is starting to happen as a result of the first two is that we are jumping into our reserves in some cases to cover operating costs, which is a terrible thing to do. And we are starting to have limited access to capital. And what I mean by that is debt. So on that ambulance loan, we could only get a loan from one bank at 8%. Because the loan, despite having a significant amount of money in our investments, the loan doesn't cash flow because we run an operating loss every single year. And finally, aging infrastructure, we can talk a little bit about that storm from a few weeks ago, which took our aging infrastructure and put a few more holes in it. We had a giant limb fall and, and put a few holes in the roof, which created significant water damage. In addition to the fact that I don't, there has really been no improvements other than in addition to that building since 1975. The woodpecker has found a bunch of places to make a bunch of holes, some squirrels like to nest in there. The building is not going to fall down, but it's in dire need of significant repairs. Okay, so in the next five years, if we are looking at trying to find a way to either renovate or rebuild our station, we have capital needs of just under $6 million. Our ambulances have a life. We, we really, after about five years, we should be turning them over. But we generally don't because we can't get a new one. But we have seven ambulances. We run four crews during the day and two at night. So you might say, well, why do you, why don't you only have four ambulances? Well, because you need to rotate them, otherwise they wear out even quicker. Power stretchers and power loads, I always get the cost confused, but combined, it's about $50,000 apiece. They have a life of seven years. They are, they are factory tested and will only be covered by a maintenance agreement for those seven years. So I can keep the stretcher in year eight, but that's a reliability for us. Monitors last about eight years. Right now they're about $43,000. There may be new protocols coming down from the Department of Health. The monitor that will be required for that will probably be between $50,000 and $60,000. I will leave the rest of it. So we have about $3 million in, pardon me, equipment and vehicle needs. And about, we think maybe $3 million to fix the building. So on the left there is just where our 2023 actuals ended up. You'll see we had an operating loss of 120,000-ish. And our 2024 budget was for an operating loss of about 150,000. We'll probably do a little bit better than that, but not much. And at the bottom, you'll see what our capital, capital purchases were, the significant increase in debt and decrease in our cash and investments. So our current request, there's actually two requests. We are requesting an additional funding in 2024 of $55,000 to help offset the cost of that $307,000 ambulance. We've also applied for a 2% state loan so that we can bring the the principal down on that 8% loan, but they will not refinance it at less than 8%, but at least the principal will be lower. For 2025, our estimated request for operating expenses from Euclid Township is 165,000. And for capital is 133,000. So that's the official request. This is interesting information. We implemented a new subscription program a few years ago. And so we're able to get data by township. We mail in total about 25,000, 27,000 households, residences. So in Euclid Township, we mailed 7,606 residences and received 1,538 subscriptions for a total of $146,000. A subscription, for those of you who aren't aware, is a little like an insurance policy, if you will. If you call for an ambulance and you have a subscription, you won't be balance billed. So the percentage return in Euclid is 20%. And of those 1,538 people, 345 gave additional donations totaling $23,000 for a total from Euclid residents of just under $170,000. On the left, you'll see our flyer, our subscription flyer for this year that went out, went out a little bit late this year. Went out, I think the first week in July instead of the last week in June. And reminders will be out in the mail this weekend or next week. So if you've got yours and you put it in the old circular file, when you get the new one, I would ask you to consider becoming a subscriber. I wanted to thank Euclid for sending a couple of representatives to our screening of Honorable But Broken EMS in Crisis, which is a documentary about the crisis in EMS, which is frankly a nationwide issue. This isn't a Euclid issue, it's not a Chester County issue, it's not a Pennsylvania issue. It is actually a national issue. So we appreciate that Euclid is sending some representatives. And I think that might be the last slide. So does anybody have any questions?
I'll just say I asked, I had, the township had the pleasure of meeting with Euclid ambulance, what, a month ago or so? And so I appreciate that conversation. Don't have any additional questions at this exact moment, but perhaps?
I mean, so I guess my question is, it's kind of seeing if you can see the future here. You know, because we've, understandably because of the crisis that you've described here, that we've increased in our, our contribution. And I just want to see, what do you think the rate of increases over the future? Since we're starting to talk about longer terms, you know, how we are going to address this as it gets bigger internally?
Question. Outside the real fix, which is the change in the way EMS is funded. So we talked a little bit about Medicare, we talked a little bit about private insurance currently now, not in all cases, but in almost all cases, we only get paid by insurance if we transport to the hospital. So that model has to change. So that means if a patient refuses, we don't get anything. So, and a lot of what I'm saying in general, there are exceptions to, to some of these things. So until that issue is addressed, unfortunately in Pennsylvania, it is the responsibility of the municipalities to provide the service. The code doesn't say how you're supposed to pay for it, it simply says you're supposed to provide it. One of the panelists that will be there tomorrow is the Chair of the County Township Board of Commissioners. They recently were, I think there's about 10 municipalities that have implemented the EMS tax. They recently did it, and so he's going to be talking about that experience. But short of a major fix to the system overall, I think in Pennsylvania, that's where this is headed. If I'm honest, that's where this is headed. I will say that it does provide relief to a municipality's general fund, right? Because that would be a specific tax dedicated specifically, you know, to go to the EMS agency. And there's the fire tax as well. So that is what I think the short-term solution is. Because I think the bigger solution isn't happening anytime soon. And maybe not even in the rest of my lifetime because it's a big fix.
All right, thank you.
Anybody in the public have a question? Yes?
So here are the new caption. So we get public tests to be a subscriber, we get them from Lyonville. We have them.
Minkless? Minkless?
Minkless.
And I don't really understand, I guess. So where do you live? Yeah, but like, right around here or?
Yes.
So, so, so that would be Lyonville Fire Company is a fire company only? And Euclid ambulance is an ambulance company only? So in other places like downtown, for instance, Minkless is both. So I understand, I, I understand that sometimes that happens. We all use data. We've ended up sending subscription notices kind of like right across the line of where our territory is. So it could be that they just inadvertently sent you one. But according to my friend Mike Holmes here, you are in Lyonville Fire Company's district. And you're definitely in Euclid, Euclid ambulance's district.
So when is it supposed to subscribe to?
Subscribe to Euclid.
So from the firehouses.
Okay, so I should ignore that question?
I'm not saying that publicly, but probably. So your primary fire EMS coverage is Lyonville Fire Company and Euclid ambulance. That's it. So they would honor ours.
That, that actually brings up a question that I had. Do you factor in the resident subscriptions into like your funding formula for how much you're asking from each municipality? I mean, each municipality, yeah.
We use our estimate of subscriptions as revenue towards our entire P and L to come up with the amount, you know, the difference, what we're short. And honestly, even with what we're asking for, for next year on the operating side, we're probably still going to be short, which is why that says estimated. Because at the time, we had to start doing this, so you all could do what you need to do. Our budget isn't completed yet, right? So we make a lot of assumptions.
I have one question. Do you have municipalities within your first coverage area that have required household subscriptions through like the land development process or through conditional use process?
So not required. There is currently, we currently only have one from a project that was built a few years ago in West Whiteland Township, Arbor Terrace. And they gave us a $30,000 donation before they started building. And they committed to buying a subscription for every room in the facility. So it stays with the room. So if the resident moves to another facility or passes away, that subscription stays with the room. So whoever is in that room who needs an ambulance. And when we, and Arbor Terrace is currently considering also buying a mobile integrated healthcare subscription for every room. And as Sammy said, that is a completely separate program of its own revenue. It is not supported in any way by operations. In fact, the half a million came from, it was the county that we got the arbit money from.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
It's twenty fifty seven subscription. Well. Better than home. Jordan, then I think it would be two, although version, right? You know, we try to get it out there. For saying that, I would gather that it improves the class lines. Because perhaps it's not that, and we can't wait to be noticed, but we need to allow this. For this potential, then look at this again. Want to turn one without emergency.
It's true.
And, and support the fact that there's
Well, and that's about we do free community CPR. Sorry for hijacking your
graph that Eaton House's conversations are supposed to be in Lyonville.
Yes.
You should population, not all answers.
That is correct.
And you speak for that all the way.
I can only tell you they've been getting the same presentations for the last five years.
Can we just put that back out?
I think, can we probably make this available via the website? Or, or is it accessible on your website? It's not.
That will be up to them if they are happy.
They want to send it up.
Bike up, are you?
Bike up, are you?
Right.
The substation. And welcome.
And I think, I think it is also fair to say that over the last three years, our asks have increased substantially. Right? And so, you know, when an ask might have been thirty thousand dollars four years ago, it's now a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And, you know, every township is in a different place, and I don't profess to know, nor do I want to know what their financial situation is. That's for them to decide. But it's a good question.
Right. And so, and just for historical context, when me and I first came on the board, we, I don't think we were giving you, I think we were giving you zero. Yes, exactly. So we, we increased it to thirty because that's what you were asking at the time. But as you can see, like, and that's why my question was really geared towards a couple of minutes ago, because it's just, it's going up. And if you're following the news and it's kind of a niche news item, but if you're following it, it's all across the state and country, but just focused on the state, like, it's, it's a real issue almost everywhere, and especially in the suburban areas, I think.
Today, an article about a nine-year-old girl in Massachusetts. All of the local ambulances were out. Some of them were doing wall time in the hospital. They called nine one one. There was no ambulance to come. The fire service came. They ended up taking the young girl to the hospital, I think in the fire chief's SUV, but she did end up passing away. So, you know, the question to put to the public across this country is, what if you call nine one one and nobody came? So
I think this information in some public
We don't have near the website traffic. The only people who go to our website are people looking for training, pretty much.
And, and I'll just bring that full circle by saying, we've already started as of last month in a public forum discussing our work, our budget, and, and we have that scheduled for workshops throughout the rest of the year. This was kind of a, a mini topic last month, just because we had just met and we were looking at your requests moving forward, but certainly there's opportunities for the public to learn about and provide comments on how we move forward as a municipality and address the challenges, because it is a service that we, that we need to provide and that's necessary. So certainly many more conversations to come, and I appreciate your time and the information, and I look forward to the event tomorrow.
Happy to see you. And you all can be our best advocates, because when you tell your neighbor or your family or your friends, that's when it means something to them. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving ahead to items four and five, which we're going to handle together, is an appointment to the Park and Recreation Committee. The board is appreciative of Mr. Taryn Menderata, who has volunteered for both positions and vacancies for the Park and Rec and Community Day Committee moving forward.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Taryn Menderata to both the Park and Rec Committee and the Community Day Committee.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, I will go ahead and call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving along to number six, approval of salt bids.
The bid opening for the salt bids was on August seventh. Eastern Salt Company is the low bidder at seventy dollars and twenty cents per ton. Last winter, they were seventy four dollars and fifty eight cents per ton. Based on results, it is recommended that we award the bid for sodium chloride at seven, seventy dollars and twenty cents per ton to Eastern Salt Company of Lowell, Massachusetts.
I move to award the bid for salt to Eastern Salt Company at seventy dollars and twenty cents a ton.
A second.
Any questions or comments from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving along to number seven, permission to re-advertise bids for snow contractors.
Last month, we were here seeking permission to advertise for this. As of as of now, we have not received any bids for this, and we're looking to re-advertise. And we will be back to you with those results at the October meeting.
Great, thank you. Number eight, permission to advertise for Greenlight Go Seven program.
Okay.
She said she's going to bring the bids back.
This is permission to re-advertise?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll make a motion to grant permission to advertise, re-advertise the bid for snow contractors.
A second.
Any questions or comments? Sorry, I was avoiding the reality of snow. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Now, number seven, permission to advertise for Greenlight Go Seven program.
Okay. This Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Greenlight, Green Light Go Seven grant involves traffic signal equipment improvements at thirteen intersections within Euclid Township. They're all along the one thirteen corridor. It will provide its upgrades to the video and radar detection system on most of the approaches there. Bidding of the project will be done through Penn Bid, and construction must be completed by May fifteenth, twenty twenty five with this grant.
I'll make a motion to approve permission to advertise for the Greenlight Go Seven program.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from the board? The public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. And number nine, resolution number twenty twenty four eleven, endorsement of Landscapes Three Chester County Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Kegel?
For you, excuse me, for use of resolution endorsing Landscapes Three, the county's comprehensive plan. By doing so, you're essentially saying we acknowledge it exists and take it into consideration when making planning and land use decisions. But there's nothing which binds you or any other entity from following it or using it as an affirmative information source. Landscapes Three has the township identified as suburban and suburban center. Suburban landscapes are predominantly residential communities with locally oriented commercial uses and community facilities. The focus is really on residential neighborhoods with enhancements in housing types and affordability. Neighborhoods are interconnected by roads, sidewalks, and paths with convenient access to parks and community facilities. Suburban center landscapes have varying land uses accommodating commercial, residential, and industrial with a focus on sustainable development. Both suburban and suburban centers have a preservation focus, looking to preserve and reuse historic buildings, preserve and restore stream corridors and other critical natural features. They also both focus on bicycle and pedestrian facilities and improve connections between uses new parks, central greens, public community gathering places, streetscaping artwork, and other really placemaking elements. And finally, they're both, they both focus on expanding public access to natural areas and trails. All elements, I think we can agree, define the township and have been a focus of the township over the years. The last piece I really want to touch on with Landscapes Three, and perfectly honest, one of the driving forces on recommending endorsement is the access to funding this provides. The county currently allocates ten million dollars a year in open space funding for preserving land and farms and developing new parks and refreshing existing parks. We're also able to utilize that funding to leverage tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars in state and private funding that's available for those, for those efforts, as well as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to help municipalities accomplish projects such as zoning ordinance rewrites, transportation planning, and other planning activities. And for those reasons, we are recommending that the board endorse Landscapes Three.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, endorsement of Landscapes Three Chester County's Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the announcements. All meetings will be held at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. On August twenty first, the Zoning Hearing Board will be meeting at seven PM to render decisions for ten thirty seven well shares and four eleven light foot. On September second, Labor Day, the Township offices will be closed. On September third, the Board of Supervisors workshop meeting will be held at twelve PM. On September fourth, the Planning Commission will meet here at seven PM. Seven PM, right? Seven? Yes, sorry, it wasn't on the agenda. And on September ninth, the Board of Supervisors will be meeting here at seven PM. I also wanted to point out, forward-looking a little bit, on September twenty first, at nine AM, Euclid Township will be hosting a National Cleanup Day along our adopted route of, our adopted stretch of Route one hundred. There's information on our website and our social media on how to RSVP for that. It's a good opportunity to come out, keep our community clean, and meet some of your neighbors. Feel like you've started your day off doing something positive. So I would welcome you all to join us. And with that, I will open to the public for any comments. We'll start here. First, I have Laura and Dawn Harding.
Thank you. My name is Laura Harding. I live at three oh one Brookwood Drive, which is exactly where the detour happens at Peck Road, because they've been working on the bridge now. We are now at the end of the seventh month that that detour has been happening. And everybody comes right exactly where it is and goes down filming, which has made traffic there very dangerous for those of us who live there. And in addition, has caused a great amount of pain and suffering for the residents there. In addition, we also have
Okay, I'm sorry. Hold on just one moment. I don't, I don't want to not, you're listening.
We can wait till I come up here.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just, we'll fix this after.
Sure.
In addition to all of that, we also had a filming by HBO on the land directly across the street from us that used to be called, used to be owned by the French family. So the house was abandoned, and there's a whole bunch of acreage there. And I believe there's a plan to put in a subdivision there, lots of different houses. They're going to eventually take that down. But over the summer, while the detour was also there, HBO is also there filming, filming all night long, very often, and causing a lot of pain and suffering for the residents that live there also. And what has happened is that that stretch of Peck Road is a mess. It is a mess. It is filthy. I have gone out numerous times cleaning up trash left by the HBO people, not to mention trash left by all the people who are working there. In addition, it's just a mess with piles of rocks and trees that were cut like fifteen or twenty feet up and are just sitting there looking really horrible. And I would just like to know if there is by any chance, if there was any monetary compensation by HBO to Euclid Township for the use of that land and the use of that abandoned house? And could there, is there any way we could somehow get the township to help clean that up? I'm happy to go out and clean up whatever area I live in, and we do that every year. We sponsor a cleanup every year. And I personally go out and clean up Peck Road on an ongoing basis. I can't move those logs and trees and branches. It's impossible for me to do that. Could we please clean that area up? Could we please use, if there was any monetary compensation by HBO, use that money to benefit the people who live on Peck Road and the people who live in Brookwood? And that was my request. And again, thank you very much. I know that this Peck Road project is coming to an end. God, I know it will. I really do. And I've been looking at your website, and I appreciate all the information you put out on the website to let us know that that will indeed be coming to an end, and we are greatly looking forward to it. But there's, there is, that mess is still going to be there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Harding, Laura's husband. We live at three oh one Brookwood. And first, I want to say thank you for all the support that the Township has given us. We had some litter problems a lot when the HBO people were leaving a whole bunch of trash on Peck Road. And the Township responded and the police, the police supervisor, excuse me, chief of police responded. And we're very appreciative of that. And thank you too for the way the Township supported, the police supported the annual Earth Day trash pickup there at, at Brookwood. This year, the traffic was a real problem because of the detour. We ran the Earth Day trash pickup in very, basically on the same roads as the detour. Excuse me, that's my timekeeper. And two police officers showed up and helped direct traffic and keep the, keep the roads safe, because we had children picking up the trash by the way.
Right.
So we're very appreciative of the ways the Township has helped us out. We would like, I'd like to second what my wife said, and that is both sides of Peck Road are a real problem right now with respect to logs, trees that are cut off at twenty feet, plus a whole bunch of fallen logs, fallen trees, overgrowth, weeds, trash, all kinds of problems like that. And we just asked the Township either to take advantage of the, of now when the road And we just asked the township either to take advantage of the, of now when the road is closed, to send the Public Works Department down there to load up those logs and and get them out of there, and then cut the, cut the underbrush with the brush hog or whatever, or take some other actions to clean that up. When you look at their comprehensive plan, that's supposed to be a scenic, it's, there's a green line drawn along, and it's supposed to be a scenic route with intrusions. Well, it's mostly intrusions now, it's not very scenic, let's put it that way. And then I'm trying to remember the last point that I wanted to make. Oh, our neighbor, our Peck Road neighbor, Chris McQuail, who you may know, has volunteered the use of his tractor to help with a cleanup. And he has said to me, hey, you know, if you can get your homeowners association out there, we're going, we can have some homeowners with my tractor and maybe the township, and we'll get this all cleaned up. That seems like it's a potential. So we might have some sort of a public private type partnership to try to clean up Peck Road, the Peck Road Embankment. So I guess that's about all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else on my list, is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry.
Can we fix the, we need to fix the salt bid really quick. Yeah, we mistakenly only awarded a bid for sodium chloride, but we also need solar salt and deicer. We only use sodium? Oh, okay, so we don't use the other, we don't use the other things? Thank you, Katie.
No problem, that's all that we use, so we're in consortium.
Okay.
That's all we use, there's other townships that go out to bid, so we save money that way.
Okay.
So West Bradford Township is the one who runs the whole thing, they get, they do all the paperwork, get all the bid out, and then they send us, these are the results. But that's the only type of salt that we use, we don't use all the solar stuff or any, any of that. So that's all we put in for, so that's why the paperwork you got from West Bradford has them all listed.
Okay.
But I only spoke about what we use, because there's really no need to speak about.
That makes perfect sense, thank you so much for clarifying, okay, we're good.
All right.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, everyone, after the meeting, we will be initiating the conditional use hearing for the Calvary Chapel of Chester Springs. So stick around if you're interested in that.